Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the March 5, 2024 Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
All right, tonight we have the President with us, Mr. Bessie, Ms. Whiteside, myself, Jared Chadwick, Mr. Bowen via Zoom, Mr. Slavin, and we are expecting Derek Sullivan at any point in time.
Correct. Fledge of Allegiance, Mr. Tropiano.
The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Okay, I'm going to make one comment, and that is that this is a business meeting, and I would hope that everyone in the room would be paying attention to the meeting and not having side conversations. And I will now ask if there are any residents here who would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item. If so, if, and on the webinar, please raise your hand, and I can't see those, Mr. Day, so. Yeah, thank you. So they would be non-agenda items, and you would be limited to two minutes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item? Seeing none? Fine, thank you. We'll now go to announcements. Mr. Slavin.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have any announcements for the second week in a row, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie.
No announcements tonight, thank you.
Mr. Chadwick.
The only announcement I have is, I don't know if a lot of people have seen lately, but Mr. Mark Pacico has announced that he's not rerunning for another term as Senator for the First District Plymouth and Bristol areas, so just want to let you guys know that, and it sounds like there's a lot of people already signing up for his seat.
Thank you.
There is.
The, a couple of announcements. We continue to have an extremely active Council on Aging, and they have, I think, 600% increase over what they were offering in a prior year, so they are doing trips to Foxwoods and taking boat rides on the Charles River, not in the cold weather. But they're doing a really nice job, and I just want to say thank you very much to Sharon Rice and the volunteers who work there. The Damian's Pantry, new building, opened last week. I did get a tour of it before it opened. It's really a wonderful facility for the people, not only in the town of Wareham, but from southeastern Massachusetts. Basically, they are grant-funded, and they do serve resident, people other than residents in the town of Wareham, but that's the way their program has been designed. I will remind the individuals of what Mr. Slavin told us a couple of weeks ago. The lights at the end of Swift's Beach Road were going to be delayed until 2027, which was totally unacceptable, and we hope that they will be there in the year of 2025, which is still pretty unacceptable. So, we will now go to appointments and interviews. Mr. McCoy, are you here, or are you in the audience?
Phil McCoy?
Yes, please. Would you let him in, please? Thanks.
Is she done?
Okay. We have before us an appointment to the Little Harbor Golf Course Advisory Committee, and Mr. McCoy has been recommended by that committee, and as soon as he signs in, we will be hearing from him. Apparently, he's a very good golfer. Is that correct? Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi, everyone.
Can, hi, can you identify yourself for the record, Mr. McCoy?
I'm William McCoy. My address is Eight Penny Lane. I've been a resident of Massachusetts for 52 years.
Ah, and what's your golf handicap, sir? No.
I don't get to play enough.
Good answer.
Right now, I'm probably a 10.
Okay. Would you just let us know why you would like to serve on this committee, sir?
I have a lot of valuable input I can put in. I've been a golfer for years. I've been down the course for years. I learned how to play there. I have a lot of friends around that I can get advice from and maybe use their input. I can be their mouth, you know, or their ears. And I'd like to do something, some volunteer work and help out around the town.
Thank you. Any of my members have any questions of Mr. McCoy? No? Mr. Bessie? No? Mr. Slavin, do you have any questions of Mr. McCoy? Hearing none, I will accept a motion. Mr. Chadwick?
I move to appoint William McCoy to the Little Harbor Golf Course Advisory Committee with a, as a member to, a term to expire December 31, 2024.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to appoint to a term to expire December 31, 2024. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin? Is not there? Yes, it is so. Mr. McCoy, you have a bunch of paperwork that you need to provide us with, which is a copy of the certificates that you have completed the open meeting law training, that you've taken the ethics course and other things. Those documents are available to you online. Until you have taken those courses and provided the Select Board Office with the documents, you cannot be sworn in. Once you provide them to the Select Board Office, they'll give you a piece of paper. Then you go to the Clerk's Office to be sworn in. Are, do you have any questions about that?
So, where do I get this? It's online, you said? Do I just look it up online, or is there a link that I can go to, or?
If you call the Select Board Office tomorrow, or email, they'll send you the links. If you go to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and look at the ethics training and the open meeting law training, they both are, you can find them that way, but we have other, we have anti-harassment training, we have a volunteer handbook, we have a whole bunch of other things that we ask you to confirm that you've actually, you know, that you're familiar with them.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
10 handicap, I'm not playing him.
I'll give you a couple.
We now have a hearing concerning Barnacle Bills, and I'm going to turn this hearing over to Mr. Bowen, Town Council. Is Mr. Andrew Mattos present?
Yes.
Would you step forward, please? No. Hi, can you have a seat, please?
Yes.
And identify yourself for the record?
Andrew Mattos, from Barnacle Bills.
Thank you. Mr. Bowen, I'm going to turn this over to you, sir.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Would anybody who tends to testify, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, you may be seated. Good evening, Mr. Mattos. Do you have an attorney or a representative with you tonight?
Oh, no.
All right. And you received a copy of the letter dated February 26, 2024, which I'll read, or did you receive it? Dear Mr. Mattos, on March 5, 2024, at 7:00 p.m., the Select Board will hold a hearing?
Yep.
Okay. And the reason for holding this hearing was non-payment of license fees and failure to provide evidence of required insurance?
Yes.
Okay. And by a prior correspondence, you were asked to pay the fee prior to tonight's hearing?
No, February 14.
Well, then subsequently?
Yeah.
It said prior to the hearing date. So we'll take the more generous interpretation and say prior to, right now. Have you, have you paid the license fee?
I went to the town, and it was Wednesday, and I also went Thursday, but I couldn't pay it because of the meeting today. So I couldn't pay the...
Why?
I guess they wanted to go in front of the board with the, with the case the way it was, but I went in with the resident apartments.
Who said that?
It was Linda at the Board of Selectmen's Office.
That's correct.
Now, Linda, Linda wouldn't have said, "He can't pay."
She suggested that he come before us with evidence that he could pay. Yes, she did say that.
All right. Do you have payment with you tonight?
Yes. Yes.
Can you just put it out on the table?
I'd like to know what form of payment it is.
Yeah, we'll ask.
A check, or either that, I can pay it online tonight, however you want.
Well, personal check?
Oh, yes.
All right.
No.
All right.
Or I can, I can put it through the town of Wareham, the link, and pay it online.
They really, members of the board, it's up to you. Mr. Mattos, just so you understand?
Yes.
The board would be within its rights to take the position?
Oh, I, I...
That, no, but I want you to hear this, because I want people to understand this, that if you did not pay for your license by January 1, that your license just disappeared, that there wouldn't even be a need for a hearing, that it would be gone, and that if you wanted to open and have a license, you'd have to start from scratch and hold, have a whole new application and a whole new hearing, which is a very involved process. You know, when you're doing simply a renewal, there's a presumption that it's going to be renewed unless you did something really bad. I mean, assuming that you pay your fee. Whereas if you apply for a brand-new license, there's no expectation that you're going to get it. So there's a big difference between the two. This is why it's very important that if you have a license and you're renewing it, that you get your money in with the application. Now, we've looked back at the files, and Madam Chairman, you correct me if I'm wrong, this has been a problem for several years in a row now.
That is correct.
All right. So, you know, you're putting yourself in a terrible position.
Yes.
Now, I've often been told by Madam Chairman that it's not the business of the board to put businesses out of business. I've heard you say that, I think, Madam Chairman. So, you're just putting yourself in a bad, bad spot. When you file that renewal application, the check has to be with it.
Yep.
Otherwise, I mean, you could end up with no license. So, Madam Chairman, I, there's really nothing else for me to run here. The gentleman is prepared to pay. You can tell, you can, or if you want, take him at his word, that he'll go through the portal tonight and get it paid. My guess is if you didn't do that, it'd probably be all over for you.
Clarification, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
We were given, we had an informational hearing earlier in the year, and we gave you a very generous deadline of February 14 to provide all of the documentation, including the payment. You did not, nor did you contact the office at that time. Subsequent to that, we sent a police officer to shut you down because you were, in fact, serving food. I don't know whether you were serving liquor or not. You had neither a common vic license nor a liquor license. We then gave you a very, even more generous time to come up with the payment and all of the other documentation. This has been at least the past four years, sir. Technically speaking, and I believe I'm correct, you don't have a license to renew. You did not complete the paperwork by the times, by the deadline of the February 14, nor did you have it in, at the time, generally speaking, when we would renew such a license. And in fact, when we renewed the licenses in the December meetings, they were all subject to payment of all fees and providing the tip certification as well as insurance policies. So technically speaking, he doesn't have a license, and in fact, we told him that. Mr. Chadwick?
I don't want to see anyone obviously put in hardship, but like Ms. Whiteside said, four years running. I'm a nice guy, and I believe, in my opinion, don't mistake my kindness for weakness, but I'm willing to give, in my personal opinion, I'm willing to give you this chance, but I'm going to tell you right now, next year, I'll be looking. I'll be looking for it, and that will be the end of it. And especially for the liquor license, we have a whole list of other businesses in town that are searching for those. So, next January, not done, I'm pretty sure you'd lose it within a week. That's all.
Mr. Slavin?
He's muted.
You're muted, sir.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We're having a little problem with the video and the actual sound coming out this way. As you know, I went over to the restaurant to visit with him, I believe, two times, asked him to try and get this done and completed, because, you know, if he hadn't, he would end up losing the license. Everybody knows when it comes to business, I try and do whatever I can to keep businesses in town, not drive them out. I know where some of the members stand as far as this goes. Again, we have a business where they're there, he has all the equipment, everything is there. The issue has been for a lot of restaurants, every, either closed in open partial weeks, having a problem getting help, et cetera. It does an excuse not following through and doing the paperwork necessary so you can be active. I'm really having a hard time canceling somebody out if they will at least go forward and guarantee us that this will not happen again. It's just a, it's a hard situation, and I know where he's at. I've talked to him several times. Like I say, I know some of the board members are not as lenient as I am, but in this particular case here, when we come to vote, I'm going to basically vote to let him continue if he takes care of what's necessary in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bessie?
I think, I don't think it takes much for people to figure out where I stand in cases like this. It's frustrating to see a business that's been around for quite some time that has been having issues for, you know, the better part of four years. And then, on two separate occasions within the last several months, operating without a license, being warned about it the first time, and then opening back up again, and then having to be shut down a second time. In my opinion, there's been way too much leniency with this license from, you know, allowing the informational hearing to happen, then giving you more time, and then still not coming up within that time, and then, in my opinion, waiting till the 24th hour to make that payment before you have to come before us, regardless of what was told to you at the office. We've dealt with license issues and non-license issues with other businesses in the past and had a very firm stance with some of them. I just don't, I don't see how we can't make it to where, if you want the license, you have to go through the whole process again, based on history and based on all of the leniency we've given you to get this taken care of without any contact until Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever day it was you went in to try to make that payment. It's just frustrating that, as, as a town, we're trying to help the businesses, and we're trying to do what we can, and to Jared's point, you know, kindness for weakness, there's only, you know, so much that we can take, and so many times we can give opportunities, and in this case, just this year alone, we've given multiple opportunities for it to be taken care of, whether it's a lack of time, you know, lack of respect, lack of wanting to take care of it. I don't know. I can't speak for you, but I can speak for myself, and the frustrations of, you're just one of dozens and dozens of businesses that we deal with on an annual basis for multiple different types of licenses, and holding a license that a lot of people covet and would love to have to do business in this town, why shouldn't I give someone else an opportunity to have that license and do something that they want to do?
Thank you. My stand is that you don't have a license, that because you did not pay within the timeframe of February 14, when we gave you a very generous deadline after we gave you an informational hearing, you don't have a license. I would be willing to have you apply for a liquor license, but I am not willing to take a payment in, on a personal check. It needs to be a bank check, and I absolutely cannot really countenance or understand how, having been given all of the opportunities that you were given, you didn't come to the office before the last minute. So, I'm going to ask, there is no license. Yes, sir.
Well, Madam Chairman, I, I don't have a vote, so make that clear. So I'm just offering my comment for advisory purposes for the board. The board sent the gentleman out two letters, one dated February 26 and one dated February 27. The two letters actually say two different things. The February 26, or the February 27 letter says there's going to be a hearing, you're given a generous deadline, you didn't pay by February 15, so we're going to go ahead and have the hearing. The February 26 letter, if you look at the last paragraph, the last sentence of the last paragraph, it says, "If you wish to avoid both cancellations, you must pay the applicable fees as well as provide all the required documentation to the Select Board prior to the hearing date," which is today.
Are you looking at the February 27 letter?
I'm looking at the February 26 letter. So, the gentleman says he went to your office to make payment last week.
That's correct.
That's consistent with what the February 26 letter said he could do. So, I have to tell you, I think it would be, and I don't like to make judgments about proposed actions, but I have to tell you, I think it would be unfair to hold the gentleman accountable for trying to pay last Wednesday or Thursday, whichever it was, when a letter that came out from your office said that as long as he paid prior to tonight, it would be okay. So in the circumstances, I would recommend that you require him to come in tomorrow with a bank check for the full amount and that it be accepted, assuming, of course, that the required insurance documentation was also present. And I make that recommendation just based upon the plain words of the letter that came out of the office.
I will point out for the record that both letters were reviewed with Town Council before I sent them out. I also will read into the license, into the record, the February 27 last line, "You do not have any licenses in force and may not open."
I was, I, I opened one day, the Monday. I've been closed since then. I've opened...
I understand that, sir.
...since January.
And both times, we had to shut you down because you did not have a license. And when, excuse me, I don't really feel like arguing with you or anyone else, excuse me. The officer who went to you the last time, the second time, you told him that you had the insurance paid for. You did not provide that to the office, you didn't have a license on site, you didn't have a common vic license on site. That has been a four-year record of what you have done with, in my opinion, a very irresponsible manner of handling your business. That's my take on it. I hear what Town Council is saying, and I regularly say to people, "Thank you for choosing to do business in Wareham, but business is business, sir." Mr. Bessie has pointed out, as has Mr. Chadwick, there are several people who would love to have the license that you do. I'll accept a motion.
Madam Chair, just as a point of note, Derek Sullivan is sent to the meeting.
And, thank you.
All right, so, where did this go? All right, at this point, I'm going to move...
That's the name.
I'm going to move to approve Barnacle Bill liquor license and common vic license under the condition that a bank check is received in the Selectmen's Office by closing tomorrow.
That's not good enough, noon time, sir. We have to process the payments.
By noon tomorrow.
What are the documents, sir?
And all of the other required documents.
Which includes the insurance documentation, as well as the tip certificate, as well as the liquor liability insurance.
Have you got those?
I, the, the office has a copy of the insurance, the liquor liability with the business insurance, and she wouldn't accept the tips, but I do have the tips certification, so I do have the paperwork. I just want to say I apologize.
I'm sorry. We, we have a motion on the table. Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Motion made and seconded. The motion is to accept the payment in banker's check, certified check, or bank check by noon tomorrow, and to provide evidence of your tip certification, your liquor liability insurance, as well as your regular insurance. Do you understand that that's what the motion is, Mr. Mattos?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor with a second. I'm going to go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Before we do that, sorry, Judy, also should be added in here that the ABCC will accept this application again.
That's a good point.
They may or may not. That's up to them.
Yeah, because it is way, way overdue.
Picture is frozen.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's part of your motion?
Into it.
That's part of your?
Yes.
Okay. And that's part of your second, sir? Mr. Slavin? Now you're frozen.
I think he's telling somebody, and she's like...
I think it was.
Okay. So, does anybody not understand the motion? Okay. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin? I'm going to have to come back to you. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
I'm going to ask, will you wait until his?
I'm going to hold the motion, if I may, until Mr. Slavin can come back into the meeting as he seconded the motion.
Cliffhanger. Are we allowed to contact him by phone?
This is cliffhanger.
Mr. Bowen, are we allowed to contact him by phone for that?
I don't know.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead. Just text him.
You know, so, no, don't text. I'll call straight out. Call, and as long as the call is audible on the microphones of the public, can you...
Yep.
Hello?
Mr. Slavin, we need your motion.
We need your vote.
All right, we need your, your vote.
Just to let you guys know that I keep losing the audio and the video. Very, I'm very happy right now.
What is your vote, sir?
My vote is a yes on that.
Thank you.
You'll have to keep me basically through the phone, it's like...
Okay.
I am going to abstain, which gives you a chance. Had I voted no, we would not go any further. Do you understand that, Mr. Mattos?
Yes.
I honestly do not ever want to have any late documentation or payments from you. Are you clear on that, sir?
Yes. Can I just say one thing, ma'am?
Sure.
I... I apologize sincerely. It's been like the past three, four years has been tougher. We're a seasonal business. The construction, I didn't think was going to be as bad on the highway with the cones. I don't do it intentionally. It's financial reasons. With insurance, everything is costly, and that's all it is. I don't mean to do it intentionally or to disrespect the town or the board.
Do you understand the importance of communication with the licensing authority?
Yes.
Fine. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
The vote is two, one, zero, one?
Vote's two to one.
Two, one, one.
Two, one. Just two, one?
One.
You abstained.
Two, one, one. An abstention, two, one, and an abstention.
majority of four is three. Majority of three is two.
Fine.
Two to one.
We are now going to have an informational meeting on the noise complaints received regarding Shenanigans Bar and Grill. Is Mr. Holbert here?
He is.
Would you step forward, please, and identify yourself for the record? And whoever you have with you, identify yourself for the record. Mr. Meadows, do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, I apologize. With a common vic, my common vic license was already paid for. I have the documentation. Is that separate from anything else with like the liquor?
If you have paid for the common vic, that's, you have a receipt for the $84 or whatever it is. Then that will be checked tomorrow. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would you identify yourself for the record?
My name's Stephen Holbert. I'm the owner of Shenanigans Bar and Grill.
And with you?
Patrick Tropiano. I'm assisting Mr., with Steve, with some of his issues at the bar.
Thank you. I'm now going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Bowen, so that we have a, it's an informational hearing, but we have had over the past several years, noise complaints, including over this past weekend, sir. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Purpose of, of holding an informational meeting rather than a formal disciplinary hearing is when certain issues are presenting themselves, is to try to resolve them so that they don't get to the level where you'd actually have to take some kind of formal disciplinary action. And that's what the purpose of this meeting is. The board has been in receipt of numerous noise complaints from abutters. And are any abutters, yeah, okay, so we have a couple of people that are here who are going to want to talk about that, and we're going to hear from them. I believe there was also a, is there a video?
It's a sound video, which I believe one of you sent us.
I have a bunch of them.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So I, the idea here is to hear these concerns about sound, and assuming that they sound, no pun intended, sound legitimate to the board and to yourselves, that certain remedial actions be taken, and that you come up with a plan to deal with sound issues rather than the board having to impose some kind of solutions on you. I mean, that's never the, the ideal situation for a business, they have government telling you, you're going to do this and you're going to do that. I think it's better for you to come forward and say, "Well, okay, there's an issue. Here's what we're going to do." So with that being said, I think the appropriate thing at this point might be to hear from the people who've come to tell us about their issues. And if I could ask you perhaps one at a time to come up right here, there's a microphone. Just come on up, tell us who you are, where you live in proximity to the establishment, and tell, tell the board what it is you want the board to hear about it.
Could you identify yourself for the record with your name and your address, please?
My name is Karen Ricardo, and I live at 2697 Cranberry Highway in unit 25. And I am a trustee for Grayfield Condos.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Ricardo, R.I.C.A.R.D.O.
Thank you.
Karen, if I may address you, Karen. How far away is the property from the establishment?
From me, it's about 1,000 feet or so. From the nearest people that live, they're within 500 feet. I mean, there's only 300 feet from the establishment. They're probably about 500 feet from, I want to, from the actual stage that they put up.
Now, you're on the Board of Trustees, you said?
Yes, I am.
Now, what's the Board of Trustees?
We just manage the property and, you know, the, we have a condo association. So I'm on the trustee for Grayfield Condo Association.
So in connection with this hearing tonight, have you heard from other residents?
I have a petition that I had sent back another year before with a bunch of signatures on it. I'm sure that they have that.
Okay.
I have recordings. I mean, it's, there's nights we can't sleep, three, four nights in a row of no sleep. Can't watch your TV. You can't listen to your radio. I, I drive heavy equipment, so I don't want to go to work sleepy, you know? And I have a video of when I came home after working 50 hours, and I go out on my back patio, and I was trying to watch the news on my little tablet and cook myself. That's the music in the background while I'm trying to watch my TV.
How far away were you personally?
About 1,000 feet. I feel bad for the people who are only about 300 feet away.
When was this?
This was last year.
Do you remember what date?
It was probably in May because I called, I called Steve in '22.
You can pull up the date on your phone for that.
That's, it's been already copied and brought over from my, from my emails. I'd have to go into my emails to find it, but I know it was May.
We have the petition dated May 15th of 2023. That's probably, we also have copies of emails from you dated in the May.
All the emails. I had called Steve in 2022. When they, when it first came out, it was like, what was that? Because I had never heard the music so loud. And he did try to try them to turn it down, but they would just turn it back up again. And I did complain to him about the language, which I have to say, he did take care of that. You know, the language was like, okay, I, this is more than, and I know he, I haven't heard any of that. But when it goes on night after night, and you can't get sleep, it's, it's really, you know, it's our health, it's our safety, it's our quality of life. And if it's, and believe me, this doesn't do any justice to it. I've got one when I'm standing on my deck trying to watch my TV, and I just can't even hear the TV.
You had one from the other night, too, as well? Or is that the other person? What we, the one that was sent to the office, we were unable to hear it?
And which one was that?
It was Monday, I believe.
It was this one. No, wait a minute. No. No, it says in the recording, it might be this one. And then get back to that. We're not there. This is at our house.
Is it Cyndi Lauper?
It's the Cyndi Lauper song, yeah. These are the live bands.
And this is from 1,000 feet away?
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Chairman, questions from the board?
Questions from the board? Mr. Chadwick?
Just.
I'm sorry, can I just let you know, the other trustee, Jody, is online. She just asked me to let you know that she's.
We'll get to her. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an outside stage?
Yes.
All right. You don't hear anything from an inside stage?
Well, we hear them when they're inside, yeah, but it's, it's muffled. We still hear them, especially the people that are within the 300 feet of the building. They hear them. Which Jody does live 300 feet from the building.
This past weekend, I thought was inside.
Yeah, in doubt. They can, you can hear them inside.
So this past weekend was inside?
I don't know who did the complaint this weekend. That wasn't from.
Oh, okay.
But the Cyndi Lauper thing was inside?
No, that was outside.
Oh, okay.
That was definitely outside.
All right.
All right.
All right, my next question is, when was the outside stage put in?
I don't know. It's been there for a while. We had to move, we moved, we had moved it because we were trying to meet some setback stuff. We were trying to buy the property around it. And then that failed. We had to move the stage, and it actually changed the angle of where the sound's going. The other way, it was coming more towards the building. This way, it's going more outside.
All right.
But we had stopped after this thing, it would only get out of control complaints. We shut it down. We haven't done anything since. So I was a little concerned when I was asked today whether we had entertainment outside this weekend. I said, "No, we haven't had any, I haven't done anything. Why would I do that coming to an informal meeting Tuesday night? That would be like shooting yourself in the foot." So I don't know what the allegation is about entertainment this weekend. The only entertainment we had was inside.
We'll get to that. I think some of the other people who will be speaking this evening.
Any other questions for Karen?
How long have you, I have two questions here. How long have you lived at that residence?
Five years.
How long have you been in business?
I think nine years this year, eight, nine years.
Okay.
They didn't have the outdoor entertainment when I first moved there like they do now. They would have Sunday afternoon music, and I would hear it when I was out in the garden or whatever. And like you said, it was not loud like that. I mean, you'd hear it. If you were having a party or something, it might be a little annoying. And, but when it really got bad was two years ago, and it did shut down last year.
So my, I'm just going to say my, my, my thoughts on this.
Can we wait on the thoughts until we talk, hear from the other people? May I have a question, Mr. Bessie?
No, I think we can delay here the totality of.
Okay. And do you have Mr. Slaven there still?
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Do you have anything to say or any questions?
Of Ms. Ricardo?
I think the only problem is that we as a board and not experts, when we come to explore with like an entertainment license or whatever, and we see a site plan, because the site plan doesn't show us the neighborhood behind or in front or sides. I think what we should have done, which is easy, I believe it's our fault because we didn't do it thoroughly, is we should have insisted that the stage basically faced out to the street, to Cranberry Highway. That would have eliminated almost all the issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I add something?
Let's hear from.
Let's hear from the folks first.
Let them get the people out of the way. Let everybody who wants to say something say it, because they need to voice whatever they have to say.
Hi, could you tell us who you are and where you live?
My name is Kathy Boilo. I live at Grayfield Condos. I'm in condo number 26.
This is the 300-foot one?
This is the, no, I'm right next to Karen.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes. I've lived there for seven years. It was a very quiet, nice quiet place when I moved in. The first thing I'd like to say is we had, as a abutters, no idea that they were building the outside patio or the stage. It just appeared during the COVID period. And then all of a sudden, there are outdoor concerts there. And we, you know, you're sitting in your living room, you can't hear the TV. You're laying in your bed, you can't go to sleep because it is literally like these people are playing right in my backyard, right under my windows. It is so extremely loud. That doesn't even do it justice as to how loud it is. There are people with children that are up, awake, because they can't sleep. We had, I think I was the first one to reach out to the board in 2022 when it first started. And I started corresponding with, with the chair, Coleman, and Mr. Slaven, I believe, also, bringing it to their attention. And it was just unbearable. I actually was looking into selling my condo. I, I could not. My, our quality of life went downhill. Summertime, you look forward to sitting out, you know, on your deck or, you know, sitting in your living room, watching TV, relaxing. And we just can't do it when, when the outside entertainment is going on. Yes, the indoor entertainment, sometimes you can hear it. It's muffled. It's not just the music that is a big part of it, but there are also people out there until 1:00 in the morning on this patio that's right outside of our windows, yelling, laughing, hollering. We hear Last Call over the loudspeakers. Then we hear the motorcycles leaving at 1:00 in the morning, revving, 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 revving. It's, it's really affected all of us living there. I, like I said, I didn't know when this stage came. I don't even think facing the stage in another direction would really hinder the, the music very much. It is so loud. It's like being at a concert at Greatwoods, almost. I mean, it's, whatever they call it now. I've been there for a long time, but I understand that he's, he's trying to run a business. I understand that. But we are trying to live our lives there, and it's just miserable in the summer because of it.
Thank you. Are you the one who had the other recordings?
I think Jody had some recordings.
Jody, okay, thank you.
Yeah, she made it down.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Chadwick?
No, not this time.
Mr. Bessie, any questions? Okay. And Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions of Ms. Bowyer?
Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions? Mr. Slaven?
I have no questions.
Thank you. And I have no questions. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? Isn't, is there a mass general law about concerts being outdoors within so many feet of a house or a home or a residency?
There is a noise, there is a noise statute.
There's health and safety issues too. It's mass law, one forty.
Excuse me, may I have town council answer the question, only because you're not being recorded because you're, yeah. Mr. Bowen, please?
It's more from a, almost an OSHA point of view than from an entertainment point of view, sounds that are so loud that they cause harm. So yes, there is some stuff. The town, I don't believe the town has a, a bylaw that deals with specific decibel levels. Some towns have that. We do not. Some towns have it where, you know, the volume can't be over X number of decibels at so many feet from the perimeter. Might be something to look into.
Also, I'd just like to point out that we, not only going to the board, but we also did call the police department and have complaints recorded as well. And then we were time and time again told, there's nothing they can do. They have an entertainment license. So it was really frustrating for us. You know, I mean, I know that we corresponded quite a bit about it, and I do appreciate this meeting, to be quite frank. I really do appreciate you taking your time to listen to us.
Thank you.
Wanted to do it in the cold weather.
Thank you. And yes, you have, would the other individual identify herself for the record, please? Yep, thank you. I'm sorry?
They're in, they just have to unmute.
Oh. Jody, could you unmute yourself, please?
Hi, Jody Baptiste.
Thank you. And your address, please, Ms. Baptiste?
My, my address is 2697 Cranberry Highway, unit number 35. And I am probably, I'm the second closest to the establishment.
Thank you.
And I have lived at Grayfield since I purchased my condo in 2004. And previous to this owner, the previous owner, he was respectful. If they did have loud noise, you called over there, they would turn it down. I have called Shenanigans numerous times. I've been hung up on. I've been told, hold on, and I might be wrong if the girl's name is Amanda, possibly. I've been hung up on. They don't listen. They talk while the phone is just hanging there, like that we're complaining again. The noise is unbearable. I walk out my front door with my dog. I have numerous, numerous, just video clips of me standing there. I can't sit on my deck on a Sunday afternoon and just relax. Sundays are my relaxing day. I can't because the noise is so loud, I have to go inside. I go inside, and it's still loud. It's ridiculous. They don't care. They have no respect for the neighbors. We've had complaints. We have other neighbors who go there, and they will actually act like they don't care that, the bartenders don't care that we're calling and complaining. I know from living in onset, when Habba Watch, I mean, Glenn Coles, prior to that, they had the pool. They had a house behind there, and they had to close it down from the selectmen because of the noise complaints. And it's so frustrating to get nothing when this has happened. And it's so frustrating to get nothing when this has happened since this new owner took place. And it's, he, they don't care. They don't care about the well-being of their neighbors. They, they don't care at all, and it's very frustrating. I video clip it. I'm laying in my bed, and I can hear it upstairs. I can, I video clipped it and sent it over to the selectmen. I've stood outside. I've sat on my deck. I've done everything, and it just seems like year after year, it just continues. And, and with that stage whomever just suggested to turn it, that's not going to help. If you, I've specifically told people, come over my house on a Sunday and listen to what I'm listening to. I've invited them, all the selectmen, in my, in my messages. Not one of them chose to show up, but they should. Because I'm sure not one of you on this board would wanna live there and listen to that.
Ms. Baptiste, do you have the recording from this past weekend?
I was not home this past weekend. I'm not the one who sent one this weekend. I sent, the recordings that I sent were the Cyndi Lauper one. There's a couple other ones that I sent that I was sitting on my deck or in my, in my bedroom. But I, I still have them all on my voice notes.
Okay, thank you.
I can bring them in anytime.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes.
Any questions? Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions of Ms. Baptiste?
No, I feel bad that, you know, we've kinda missed. I did actually go out there at one time to listen to the noise. I did not introduce myself. I didn't go and meet anybody. I just went to listen. It wasn't an issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else?
Is there anyone else online that you know of?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, Houston, we have a problem. So you've heard the residents. Why don't you tell us what you can do about it?
Well, I wanna, if I can, Steve will be ready in a minute here, but we, we're concerned about the issue. Since I've come on board, we're very concerned about the issues in general. There has been nothing done outside the building since. I just don't, we talked about it, and it's just been cut off. We are in the process, we have a sound engineer who's doing some work on determining how to limit the amount of noise that exits the building. We, as you well know, we had some other issues. We were having some sprinklers that have been designed. We're gonna be putting sprinklers into the building. We'll be upgrading the facility a little bit to try to help, help this. We did do some sound testing outside the building when they were playing. And, and nobody knew at the time that we were doing it outside the building, from outside the building. And I think we got up as high as 80 decibels or 87 decibels. We got some numbers we can give you on the decibel meter. Now, just to keep, so you understand, a modern refrigerator is 50 decibels. A washing machine or dishwasher is usually, although the dishwasher is pretty quiet nowadays, but a washing machine is 70 decibels. So outside the building, now that it's kept internal, hasn't been too bad. We've been trying to keep that sound down, and I think, I think we've done a better job at it. Not that we're not concerned about the people, because even though, you know, the history of the place was that there was shooters before I am, and before that was the Raven. And the Raven used to have stuff out all the time. If you remember, outside, they had big parties and motorcycle things and everything else outside, and it was really loud. But, you know, they, then they built the condos. So, you know, that, that makes a difference. There's people living there now. It's in a commercial zone, and he does have a license. And keeping with that doesn't mean that we're not sympathetic at this point. He doesn't want people complaining, you know what I mean, at all, and he'll tell you that himself when he gets, gets to speak. So we are going to deal with everything. The, the stage isn't gonna be used right now until we can come up with a sound, a way to kill the sound, so that it doesn't leave the premises in any, in any big manner, so they can't hear it at their neighborhood. And we really are doing that. I mean, it really, I mean, I, it's hard to say, but it's been, it's been underway for a while. One of the problems we have is, is whether the restaurant was going to continue. And the reason why I say that is there's a, there's a problem with a piece of the property around the property that they, they, they shut off his entrance into the property on one side, which causes a problem for him. So now he has to relieve, alleviate that before he spends the extra money to go forward with some of the changes that we need to do. Because it's gonna be costly.
It's cut, it's cut the business off 45% since the second or third week of September, when we got locked out of a property that we had a purchase and sales to buy. My initial plan was to buy the property around it and put up, Pat was dealing with Berklee School of Music to do something about a barrier wall to drop the sound to the ground, so it doesn't exit our property.
Exactly.
Now I'm dealing with a whole nother set of problems with this barrier. I only have one way in and one way out, and it's, it's cut the business in half.
So, so we are, we are, we are, we don't want you to think that we're not trying, because we are. We are gonna be very sympathetic to this, and there is nothing gonna happen outside that building at all. By the way, and the license only says inside, so. In fact, I think I was on this board when we gave him the license sometime ago. So I remember specifically that it has to maintain inside, and that's where it's gonna be. And we, we'll, I don't know who's been answering the phone, but now that he's heard it, I hope he's listening.
I'm listening. I mean, I wanna mitigate it, not litigate it. I wanna be part of the solution, not part of the problem, and I am very concerned with the neighbors and the audio and what I have heard. It bothers me.
Questions, Mr. Chadwick?
Yeah, two things. One is, if I'm allowed to ask it, who, who owns that other piece of property, and if there's, why, why is?
I don't, we had a purchase and sales sign. It'd been going back and forth for several months. We were trying to buy it because I was hoping to expand and try to mitigate some of these problems that we're having. We're having parking issues. I can't get on and off the property. I don't know whether I'll continue or not. I mean, this is, I got so many obstacles against me now. This is just another hurdle along with everything else I'm going with, and I don't know that if I can't resolve the entrance on and off the property with the parking, to be able to expand, to be able to, the whole reason that stage changed and why the sound is probably more pronounced now than it first was is I had to move the bandstand. It was not a permanent structure at first, because I missed a, was it 10-foot setback or something? So I had to move it. They said, put it in the other corner. I said, that's really not where, how I wanted it. I wanted the sound hitting the building, just thinking that that's, that was probably the best thing. I didn't have a lot of problems back then. We moved it. We started playing the other direction. The complaints started coming in, and then we have, we have to, I think we had like 24 written complaints. We had to stop. We just stopped. They said, I can't, I don't wanna be in this spot. And we're trying to figure it out now. I brought Pat on to try to help me mitigate this and figure out what we can do with the towers we could put in to suppress the sound down on the ground. Is there some kind of barrier wall? Did I have to apply for a special permit to put up some kind of soundboard on some poles along the backside of the property? I mean, I'm aware of it, and I'm very concerned about it. I'm trying to stay in business for four years now, and it's as hot as it's ever been. I got a lot of obstacles. The whole entrance or the barrier being blocked out of the property is, it's cut us off almost 50%.
My other thing is more or less of a, a little story here. So I learned when I was younger, my father was a selectman over on the island, and there was a construction company, a trucking company, that was licensed in a commercial zone, but houses all around it. And he made an agreement with them. I don't know if we're allowed to do this or whatever, but he made an agreement with them that they had to take and put a berm around their property and three rows of Leland Cypresses completely blocking it. And I have to say, I remember in my teen years, they had some loud vehicles, but with the amount of stuff, like amount of stuff that blocked it, it was minimal on the other side of that. Just wanted to say.
You know, you're, we, we actually will be dealing with this in a, the woman that is responsible for the property behind has been in the hospital. And she's out now, and there'll be some conversation coming up of how we can deal with the issue of the property. Once we can deal with the issue of the property, then we can, then he can put some money into it and put some barriers and things up. The, the sound engineers are pretty good. These guys that we have, they do a lot of work at Berklee College, and as you know, they're in the middle of the city, and they manage to keep the sound contained. So they, they know what they're doing, and I know they'll come up with the solutions, and we will be able to stop this from happening. But until we get, until we can get the property resolved, there's no sense in putting money into the property. You know what I mean? Until whatever. Now, as far as turning the sound down, I agree. We can do that to try to alleviate it and keep the, the decibel level down outside the building. And that's the only thing we can do at this point, until we get that resolved. Once that's resolved, however it's gonna work its way out, then we'll go up forward and we'll start to put up the things necessary to, to alleviate the sound. And it can be done, believe me. I'm telling you, these guys, they know what they're doing, and they can do it.
And one last thing, just because I have a weird obsession with food. You have good burgers. Just wanted to say that.
I guess the original cook just came back in the, in the last two weeks.
I'm fat and I love food, all right? I'm not gonna lie.
Thank you. The original cook just came back after a hiatus, and I'm very happy to have him back. He was in the building for 15 years prior to me owning it.
The rodeo burgers there.
Okay, Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions? Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie?
I always have to go back to the food.
He's predictable, anyway.
You gotta go back to the food.
Sounds good to me.
So, I just wanna get to some understanding before I get into my question. So were you brought on as a consultant to the business?
Yeah.
To try to, so what exactly is it that he, that you're, what's your, what's your role and goal in what you're, you're doing for the business to help them out?
Well, my, my, my ultimate goal is to get him into a position where he doesn't bother any of the neighbors. Truly. I mean, that's really it in a nutshell. That's one of the reasons why I'm here. And I do, I've done lots and lots of work at Berklee College, helped them build plenty of sound rooms and so on over the years. And not only did I, I helped, but the, the engineers and the people, I know them, and we've had constellations, and we'll get the people in there that can do the job. We just need to get past this one little issue, because otherwise, it gets to the point, if it ends up having to be the way it is right now, I'm not so sure that he'll stay there. I think he may shut the place down because he just can't make any money. You can't lose half your audience and stay in business. And, you know, as you know, COVID, and I, I felt bad for the other guy that was here earlier, and I know he has a money problem. And COVID, year 20, 21, you know, they, they were bad. I mean, for restaurants-
It's still bad.
They had a tough, tough time trying to get by. So if they were short on money, I understand it. However, I do understand that if you're short on money, you can make, you can talk to the, you know, you can talk to you guys. You know, you can talk to, to the licensing authority and anybody who thinks they can, is they're, they're not, they're not thinking clearly. You know? I mean, I sat up there a long time. I would listen. I know that.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie, keep going.
So I wanna get this, because obviously I don't, wasn't around when the original licenses were, were granted, but if I heard correctly, the, the entertainment license was only ever issued for inside the building?
Correct.
Correct.
So then, I guess my first question is, is why were we having concerts and entertainment outside? And why wasn't it, I guess, stopped at the very first point of when it was brought up? So that's my first, that's my first concern, is that, you know, we were, we, we caused issues with the neighbors, not because we were able to, but because we were violating, you know, the, the license that we had. I mean, I'm not gonna go back to the past because I don't, I don't wanna say I don't care about the past, but I don't, because I can't change the past. I can only talk about, you know, what we're here to talk about today. So that's my, so my, my first point of order, if I was to give any information, is that, you know, and I can only speak for myself because I'm only one of four that are currently on this board, is that I would never issue an entertainment license to have entertainment of that nature outside. Never. I don't care how much money you spend to knock down the noise. There's, there's not a, I don't wanna say that there's, there's no amount of money in the world that you could spend to have an outdoor venue where the houses that are in the proximity of your establishment won't be affected. It's just not possible. There's still gonna be a much higher decibel level than what is acceptable from a health and safety standpoint. Because it only takes about 80 decibels for a 30-minute, 30-minute increments before you can start having hearing issues. It's very well documented. I spent, I spent some time in the entertainment industry. I understand what noise can do. Can you absolutely spend money to mitigate the noise and lessen it? Absolutely. Do I think we'll ever get to an acceptable level in the area that you're in? I don't think so. Maybe I could be proven wrong, but at the end of the day, is the cost worth, is it, is it cost-effective, and is it worth the money that you're gonna spend, even if you're able to figure out all of the other issues that you have? You know, the one being the property that you were trying to buy that you're, you know, I drove by one day and I said, oh, what are all these big blocks doing over here? Like, this, this can't be good for the business. So I don't think, I mean, for the time that I would sit on this board, I would ever, not because I don't wanna see your business succeed, but I have to think about everybody else around, would I ever sign off on a license to have any type of outdoor entertainment? We, we had this conversation when Town Tavern opened up, and they wanted to do entertainment. We talked about what could the effects be, and what type of entertainment would you be talking about doing? And one of the things that we said is external entertainment just won't make any sense, because there's no way to protect the noise from the abutting neighbors. So that would be my biggest concern moving forward, even if you are able to figure everything else out, is would entertainment ever be licensed for you to do it outside? And I don't see how we could without being a detriment to the neighbors. And it's not to be a detriment to your business, but we can't just think about the business. We have to think about all of the pieces of the puzzle. And that would be my biggest concern, is I don't think we could ever get to that point where those pieces could all align without somebody being affected. With that being said, I have had some opportunities to go by for not long periods of time, because I don't really need to go for a long period of time to understand what the complaints are, but they are very valid, and I think the fact that you're acknowledging them, you know, is a good thing, and it speaks volumes that you wanna fix it. But we have to try to find a way to fix it now before we have to sit here and tell you, well, no, this is what you have to do now. You know, and, you know, I'm, I'm happy that you've taken the time to come out here, and you, you could have, you know, happily said, I'm all set. I don't need to deal with it or bother with it, but the fact that you're sitting having this conversation, I can appreciate. But we need to find a way to figure it out. But doing it in a way where we can satisfy the other side, the parties that are affected, but also not trying to, you know, put a, you know, a fire hose to your business and wipe you out. That's not our intention.
I get that. One of the things I wish, this had come up prior to, during COVID, is when it was shut down and I wasn't reopening, and I was being asked consistently, why I wasn't reopening, Steve, we're 25%. Other businesses are opening. 50%, Steve, other businesses are opening. 75%, Steve, other, well, the only way I can open my bar on the inside, you couldn't seat enough people distancing, social distancing, and far enough apart for me to open. I'm more of a sports bar than a restaurant. Although the restaurant seating, when you started taking all the measurements and the guidelines that they set me to, I still couldn't open. Said, Steve, you have more outdoor seating than anybody in town. Why don't you do something outside? Well, I can't. I need an outdoor bar. I can't be running back and forth. Do the, I did all this. Did all the outdoor seating. I pulled the permit, did the bandstand. That was fine. When we wanted to do it permanently, he said, you can't do it permanently. We don't meet the setbacks. You should move it. We played outdoors. It worked. I didn't have, maybe some complaints, maybe it was, were some days. Had to move it to meet the setbacks, to make it a permanent- Had to move it to meet the setbacks, to make it a permanent structure. Said, okay, I did that. Lot of hurdles to get through that. Started playing a little bit here and there. After the 24 complaints, we stopped. Whatever allegations they say we had for playing this weekend. There's kids behind me that have Hot Wheel cars, trucks that put boom boxes on the truck. They're burning rubber in the parking lot that I now no longer occupy. We've had smoke coming in the kitchen from these kids burning rubber in the parking lot. It's contaminating my kitchen with the intake air. I had to go out and talk to the kid three times. I've had to go out after we stopped playing out there and complain about the music. I'm like, listen, I'm already in trouble for this. I don't need... Can you turn it down? Now I'm asking my neighbor to turn it down so I don't get complaints with my other neighbors. This is... I got a... There's more than one thing going on here.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie?
No, I think I've made my point.
Okay, there are two people in the waiting...
They lowered their hands.
I'm sorry?
They lowered their hands.
Okay, there were two other people who wanted to speak, but they've lowered their hands? Okay. We do have a current bylaw. Division 3, Article 2. Noise beyond 150 feet is not allowed between 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. That's in our bylaws right now. Doesn't say decibels. It doesn't say anything about that. It says if you can hear it at 150 feet, you can't be doing it. That's a current bylaw.
From 11 o'clock.
Okay. So 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. There we have some real boundaries that we can suggest.
State guideline is also 11 to 7.
Suggest, okay? I also would like to have on the record that your building load is only 99 people. That includes people outside, inside, in the bathroom. As long as they're on your property, they have to be less than 99 people total. That's the law. It says that on your license, and you're aware of that. Is that correct?
Yes, I was aware of it inside. It was pointed out to me last summer that it was outside. I was unaware of that prior to that.
That is...
And we have honored that since then.
Okay, that's the law, until you have a sprinkler system. I think you got a little bit of how I would look at this. Promises are nice. And yes, we all lived through COVID, and some people had a very hard time. But I also have heard hundreds of complaints. It's really probably not 100 complaints. It's probably between 45 and 50 complaints over the past three years about the noise. That is unacceptable, period.
Okay.
Period. If I lived in one of the locations that these individuals have told us about, I'd be not only calling you up, I'd be beating on your door. And I'd probably have a squirt gun or something. Okay, so I really urge...
Well, I'm on a squirt gun.
I urge you to hear what is being said. The other thing is, promises are nice.
I don't make promises. Actions speak louder than words.
That's correct. So if I had my druthers today, I'd be saying, you know, Mr. Hurt, but you really need to knock the music off at 11:00 p.m. Every night.
Exactly.
Okay? Not this 1:00 in the morning stuff, okay?
We're not playing at 1:00 in the morning, so I don't know where that's coming from.
Well, are you playing past 11? Because that's the bylaw.
License is till 12 on the inside.
And the bylaw says if somebody can hear it at 150 feet, doesn't matter what the decibel level is, that is contrary to our current bylaw. So my suggestion to you, and I can't make it a requirement, I would suggest that you not play past 11:00 p.m. until you have some of these other noise containment ideas taken care of. I honestly don't want to hear from these individuals again. And I don't blame them for complaining.
Not at all.
Absolutely not. And I asked them to come tonight, and I asked you to come tonight so that we could all get this out on the table. We could understand where everyone is coming from. I think you've heard the two gentlemen on either side of me. And I'm just going to say it one more time. We have a current bylaw, Division 3, Article 2. If you can hear it at 150 feet after 11:00 p.m., you are violating the bylaw. And then for... Therefore, we have the right to shut you down. And we being the town of Wareham, through its either police chief, building inspector, and the fire department also has the authority to act on behalf of the town, even though it's not a town department.
Agreed.
Mr. Bowen, any suggestions?
Well, I think when you have someone who's saying that they're developing plans to address it and seeing as how we're still in the cold weather when people's windows tend to be shut rather than open. Open windows make it tougher. It might be worth having you come back in with, you know, the board's blessing, of course, to report in on how the mitigation plan is coming. And I know the Berkeley people are good. Patrick, I know you helped put up a building over on Mass Ave a while back. You know, if they had something they could share with the board as to mitigation, that might be good, too. But I think it probably would be worth scheduling another date in a few weeks just to let the board know and to let the neighbors know, you know, how this is progressing. And at that point, we're a little closer to the critical weather where it's going to be tougher people to be out on their porches. So that would be my suggestion. Bring it back, get a status report. Hopefully, give the neighbors some confidence that it's going to be a better season.
I have a question for you, sir. Just presume that we bring him back in, say, three weeks or four weeks. It would be every... It would be four weeks, probably. And that there continue to be complaints, and they are valid complaints. They're, you know, either recordings or we drive by and listen. And we don't yet have a plan from your engineers because I know that you've been working on the sprinkler system as well as other things. If things haven't improved, could we then have a... I'll call it a show cause hearing to limit the hours on the entertainment license?
Madam Chairman, yes. There are two types of hearings that you could hold. One would be an entertainment license hearing under Chapter 140, Section 183A, giving at least two weeks' advance notice of the allegations, chance to respond to them. And if the allegations as to unreasonable levels of noise were proven, the board could impose conditions that were pertinent to addressing the excess noise. So that's one type of hearing that could be held. Another hearing that could be held would be a liquor license hearing under 204 Code of Mass Regulations 2.05 Subsection 2, Licensed Premises Allowing Illegalities or Disorders on the Premises. In this case, it would be excessive noise or public disorder. And so you could take action against the liquor license as well. So there are tools in your toolbox to deal with this if mitigation doesn't prove fruitful.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from my board?
None.
Thank you. I guess, gentlemen, you've heard us loud and clear.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll schedule you... I'm not sure what the date will be, but we'll let you know in the next couple of days what that date would be. And I will also let the individuals who spoke this evening to let them know that we will be having you back as an informational hearing again.
Judy?
Yep.
Judy?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, if I may ask...
Yep.
What... You're dealing with outside consultants who have their own schedules. Do you have a sense of when their work product might be available?
Well, we had them... All they're working on right now is they looked at the place and they were trying to figure out whatever. But we haven't actually thrown the money up yet to give them to start working on the process because we need, like I said before, in order to make it worthwhile, we have to make sure that we resolve this other issue. Otherwise, you might not have to worry about this at all. There may not be anything there. It may go away. And that's a shame because it's been there for more than 50 years.
Judy, how long do you think in terms of if the board was to schedule a follow-up meeting, what would be reasonable?
My understanding is that the individual that's going to be... Meeting that's going to happen is going to happen in the next two or three weeks with this person who has finally got out of the hospital. So there should be something there. The only other way to do it is to do it a way that we don't want to do it because, you know, as you know, it's been there for 50 years, and you could go after it for adverse possession. However, it's not... Nothing that Steve wants to do.
There'll be no negotiating after that.
He'd prefer to make... He'd prefer to resolve the issue. You know, believe it or not, that's the way he is. And so...
Okay, but you haven't given us a better answer than that, Mr. Troppiano. Today's the 5th. We are coming up on a town meeting. I know that we're coming up on open window season. We're coming up on daylight savings, so, you know...
We're also not doing anything outside the building, though, either. There's nothing outside the building. There's nothing going on outside. No intention of anything going on...
Nothing outside the building.
Until I resolve all of these issues. I don't want to have... I don't need phone calls. I don't need people calling. I put my cellphone out there for them to call me, and I'd have to leave to come over there to make sure, to try to get the levels down. I don't want upset neighbors. I really don't. It's not the way I live my life.
So if I told you the 26th of March, which is... Or do you want to go to April 2nd?
Well, I think you should give us April 2nd to...
How about we leave it like this? We will have a tentative April 2nd. I don't even know if that's on our rotation date. It might be the week... Okay, it would be the 9th. It would be April 9th, okay? And if you have...
We'll have probably some answers for you by then.
News, please let the office know. Again, communication is really a nice thing to have, particularly when you have the issues that we are hearing tonight. Goodbye, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your time, Board. You guys have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Bowyer, or could you both write down your addresses for me on a piece of paper? Because I wasn't fast enough.
Yeah, I want everybody's name and address.
Okay, we're going back on to the licenses and permits. And we're going to ask you if you could have your name and address and of the three of you who spoke for the record, okay? I wasn't fast enough to write it all down. Thank you.
And Jody did say thank you. She got cut off. She got kicked out.
Thank you.
She said, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are back on licenses and permits. We have an application for the Church in the Pines, an Easter egg hunt. And all of the paperwork is in order, and it's in your packet. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve... I move to approve an application for the Church in the Pines Easter Egg Hunt at Deacon School Field on March 23rd, 2024, pending signing attestation form, and all departments approved.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the application. Is Mr. Slavin with us or not?
Mr. Slavin, you're...
Absolutely.
Okay. Motion in second to grant pending the repastation and the department approvals. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I think someone needs to check in with the two youth programs at least.
Yes, we have... We have to... This has to be signed off by Mr. Sullivan, anyway.
Okay.
Just so you know, we've reached out. The baseball doesn't want to let them use the infield. It has gotten bigger in scope than what was put on the application. They were seeking to have a tent. We needed to know the tent size because it has to be inspected. They asked for some other things that we couldn't do. So, you know, we are speaking to them, and I don't know if it will happen or not, but...
Okay.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve subject to certain things, and that would include your sign-off, Mr. Sullivan. Is that your motion, Mr. Chadwick?
And that is my updated second.
Excellent. I'm going to... Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin? Mr. Slavin said yes.
Say it again.
Mr. Slavin, yes or no?
I said yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Next, Mr. Chadwick, please.
I move to approve temporary signs for the First Spirit... Oh, my goodness. Spiritualist Church of Onset Holistic Psychic Fair, April 13th, 2024.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All of the paperwork is in order. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, next, please.
I move to approve temporary signs for the...
Excuse me, one second. Could you just shut the door, Liam? Thank you. Thank you.
I move to approve temporary signs for the onset Bay Association Easter Egg Hunt, March 30th, 2024, as shown on H.
Yeah, is there a second to that motion?
Uh, second.
Motion made and seconded. Again, this has... There are temporary signs for the onset Bay Association Easter Egg Hunt, which is always picked up within about 35 seconds. I think they put out 800 eggs, and they're gone in 35 seconds. Any further discussion on the motion?
800. I think the paperwork said there are going to be 10,000 eggs this year.
Okay, 10,000 eggs.
That's a lot of eggs.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick?
I move to approve temporary signs for Church of Good Shepherd, Rummage Shale, April 27th or May 11th, 2024, for rain date, May 27th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, yeah, I'll second. I'll ask a further question. So second.
Motion made and seconded to approve... Is there... You have a question? The rain dates bounce it way further.
So, no, so is it both dates of April 22nd and May 11th?
No.
No, it's an or. And so...
So the 11th is a first rain date with the 27th being a second? I'm just trying to understand it for clarification.
They are, at the moment, looking at April 27th, but they may have to go to the 11th, and the rain date would be the 27th.
Okay. All right, no, I just... There was a lot of dates there. I just wanted to be... Okay.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to grant? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Next, Mr. Chadwick?
I move to approve...
Thank you.
I move to approve temporary signs for Church of Good Shepherd, Rummage Shale. Did I just do that?
No, it was the second one.
All right.
Go ahead.
Church of the Good Shepherd, Rummage Shale, September 28th, 2024, rain date, October 5th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Again, all of paperwork is in order. Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick?
I move to approve temporary signs for Church of Good Shepherd Christmas Fair, December 7th, 2024, with a rain date of December 14th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick?
I move to approve Easter Egg Hunt at Prospect Park, Banshell, Nogazebo, for the Onset Bay Association on March 30th, 2024, pending all department approvals.
Second.
Now, wait a second. Okay, hang on a second. Easter Egg Hunt, March 30th.
What?
It's, well, you already did that.
No, we didn't. We, we approved them for signage. Temporary signage.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
No, not after that.
I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Sorry about that, boys.
I move to approve the temporary sign requests lists for the Onset Bay Association events for 2024.
And there are several, and they annually give us the list of all of their dates if, um, we always do this because they plan way ahead. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion? Again, all of the paperwork is in order. Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick?
Uh, I move to approve the annual harvest triathlon for max performance road use cycle portion only on June 9th, 2024, pending all document approvals.
Department approvals, is there a second to that motion?
Uh, second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Again, we will have some other approvals that have to be signed off by Mr. Sullivan and possibly road permission, certainly the police. Any further discussion on the motion? The paperwork is all in order. Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin? Mr. Slavin said yes. Yeah, you have your zoom, yeah. Turn your, either zoom or phone.
Hang up on him.
He hung up on me.
And you're, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
We technically don't need him anymore.
Okay, um, we now have completed those. Town business, discussion, aren't we done?
Oh, there he is.
Yes, no, we are, I was just going to read it.
That smiling face.
Go ahead.
I move to appoint town council under Town Bylaws Division 1, Article 3, Section 1.
Is this for?
Well, who, who are you going to name as the town council?
Me? Me? Am I a town council?
It's been a long night, guys, give me a break.
I, I hope it's rich.
I just said his name.
Okay, just making sure, I want to make sure we don't.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yes, only because it's rich.
Okay, thank you so much. I have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Richard Bowen, Town Council, for the following year, under the Bylaws Division 1, Article 3, Section 1. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote.
You got me for another year, buddy. Yes.
Mr. Slavin, I don't know where he is. Mr. Slavin, there you are.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Can I try it next year?
You don't get a vote, Rich.
Keep going. Come on, guys. Please.
Thank you very much. For me, it's a great honor, and I hope to be worthy of your confidence in the year going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. I should have let you make that little speech beforehand, I guess, but whatever. Okay.
I move to accept a $44 check donation to the library gift fund from Shaw's Give Back Where It Counts program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Oh. And.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick and myself, yes. I was trying to figure out what I was looking at.
Yeah, me too.
I move to approve the opt-out and reduction fees applications for curbside billing fiscal year '24 in the amount of $182.50.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve those fees. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And my, and Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Now, we have some articles to, ooh, no, we have the discussion and possible vote to hold a special town meeting. You need to read that.
All right, you want to do that?
Yep. There it is. You're welcome.
All right, uh, da, 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 let's read it first.
Read the whole thing.
Yep. Notice of April 22nd, 2024, special town meeting Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth SS2, either of the constables of the town of Wareham. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of Division 1, Article 1, Section 3 of the Bylaws of the town of Wareham amended, you are hereby directed to notify and warn legal voters of the town of Wareham that a special town meeting has been called by the select board and held at 7:30 PM on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at which time the businesses of town meeting shall be transacted. The warrant for this meeting will be well-open Friday, March 15th, 2024. The last day for submission of articles to be inserted in the warrant is Monday, March 25th, 2024. Petition articles will be accepted up until 5 PM at the above address. The warrant for this meeting will close on Tuesday, March 26th, 2024, and you are hereby directed to serve this notice by posting a tested copy thereof upon the town's principal bulletin board on or before Wednesday, March 6th, 2024. Hereof fail not and make due return of this posting with your doing there on to the town clerk. Given under our hands at Wareham this 5th day of March in the year 2024, a true copy attested from the Wareham Select Board.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to hold the meeting with the following dates and notice. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Okay, discussion and possible vote to, uh, we're going to go through the grid or the warrant articles that we can vote on this evening. We have closed the warrant, as you all know. And so, Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion? I think you can probably, well, no, go ahead.
I'm going to go through each one.
Go ahead. So you, these would be motions for favorable action. Even if we do not choose to support the warrant article, we start with a favorable action recommendation, and then we could vote against it, 0-4. But that's the format that this follows. Mr. Chadwick?
I move favorable action of election of officers, Article 1.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Yep. Yep.
How about? I move favorable action on all 17 articles. Then there's a second.
There's 14.
Oh, 14, pardon. And then just go through them one by one and call for the vote.
So moved.
But you want him to read recurring business? You want him to read each thing?
Sure. Well, just, I move favorable action on all 14 articles. Second, and then discussion. Jared reads off, you know, for example, EMS budget. You call your vote. WPCF enterprise fund, you call your vote.
Rather than having to keep repeating, I like that idea.
Exactly.
Better, better for Jared.
That was your, that was your motion, okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, so we're on recurring business. Is there any further discussion on that?
We need to do number one. We didn't go.
Oh, we didn't do account? Yeah, we did.
I move favorable action on all.
Yeah, we did. I recorded it.
Yes, we did number one. We're on number two. He stopped after, he stopped after number one, so just go to number two.
I move favorable action on all articles, on articles 2 through 14.
2 through 14.
No, 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 2 through 10. 2 through 10, I know, 2 through 10.
All right, 2 through 10.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, excellent. So that would be recurring business, compensation of certain elected and appointed officials, the revolving funds, occasional reports that are given at town meeting, the capital plan, the 25-year fiscal 25 budget, the EMS budget, the Upper Cape Regional Tech school budget, and the Wareham Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Fund. Is there any further discussion on that, those motion, that list for favorable recommendation? Hearing none, I will go for a.
Now, now, there's, the, folks, it's, I understand what you're trying to do, but you're not ready to vote on the majority of these.
Well, we are on the occasional reports.
Go through the list and choose the ones, I'm sorry, that's, I understand exactly what Mr. Bowen was trying to do, but you're going to confuse yourselves on this in the long run.
Okay. Start again. Would you please withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Withdraw your second.
I withdraw.
Thank you very much, okay. We do have the election of officers, which has been given a favorable recommendation. May I have a second, a motion on Article 2, which is recurring?
Yes, I move for favorable action, recurring business.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Compensation of certain elected and appointed officials, that actually comes down to the moderator and the deputy moderator, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Sullivan? Yeah?
It's the, it's the moderator and the, uh, they usually, used to set the, it used to be the, the town clerk.
Right, but it's not, yeah.
Register of voters.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion for favorable action?
Second.
Favorable recommendation. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Do you want to hold off on the revolving funds, Mr. Sullivan? They were printed in the warrant.
Yeah, they're as presented, and there's, they're the same ones we have each year and each year.
Yeah, okay, it's a slightly different format this year because you cleaned it up a little bit, but, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Move for favorable action, fiscal year 25 revolving funds.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The occasional reports, those are, again, planning board or different study committees and things like that. May I have a motion, please?
I move for favorable action, occasional reports.
Favorable recommendation. In other words, we would recommend favorable action. Oh, I don't know what you said. Yes. Second?
Second.
And any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is so. Capital plan, we'll skip over, Mr.?
You're skipping over all the rest of them that have not been presented to you.
Okay. Yep, you got it. Mr. Sullivan, when will we have? Well, you did a budget presentation.
Yeah, Madam Chairperson, when we have the, you know, sort of the finalized, as you know, it's, um.
It's a moving target.
Yeah, look for the school vote, uh, you know, you want the, you usually, you have something brought before you for WPCF, for the EMS, Upper Cape Cod Tech presented, usually, we ask that they present to the finance committee and the board can watch so that we're not taking Mr. Fortjett's multiple nights up. So, I think you want the information.
Okay, thank you. Then we're done with that item on the agenda, and we will now move on to, we don't have any 48-hour business. We have two sets of minutes. May I have a motion, please? I'm going to do the minutes, Mr. Sullivan, I'm going to come back to you.
Yep, I move to, for the approval of meeting minutes, or select board meeting minutes of 2/20/24 and 2/27/24.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, as written, any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Back to the town administrators' report. Mr. Sullivan, how are you this evening?
Very well, thank you. I just advise you that the catch basin cleaning has resumed this week. Just to give you an idea, there was a short pause for, for winter during some of the freeze, but since November, 1,053 catch basins were done. That's a little under a third of what we have, which kind of gives you the scope of, of what we have in the town to do for catch basin cleaning. And also, we've asked that, what, what they haven't done in the past is they've been cleaning them, and we've asked that they start marking the grates when they're cleaned with a color, so that helps people identify the ones that, that have been done. So that will continue on till we get all 3,000-plus of them.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
What do you do with the junk you pull out?
You know, that, there's a cost to get rid of that. You actually, you can't just get rid of it. It's considered a waste, and you have to stockpile it and dispose of it properly, and it can cost a small fortune, so.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, unfortunately, the spoils are considered.
Hazardous?
Yeah.[1523.56]